Meeting of the Eastern City Commission. I'd ask JJ to lead us in a prayer and James Dorff to lead us in the place. JJ?
Please pray. Dear Father, we just come before you and give you all the glory of today. Lord, just help us, guide us in the decisions we make for the betterment of the city. Lord, we pray for rain and to fill our lakes. Lord, it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state unregard, one and invisible.
Thank you very much. You started it. Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Uh, yes, we will do picture time. Let's do that real quick. We're gonna tell y'all, move your chairs, move my drink, too late, you're gonna sit down. The four men are gonna stand behind me.
Julie, can I move this just for a second? Two seconds. I promise, I'll put it right back.
Yeah, I want to check this. Nice to have you, please. Thank you.
Oh, y'all look so good. Look at you. I'm impressed.
Can I look this way real quick? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Actually got a smirk out of JJ.
Carol got on the board of ways to clean up.
One more, Richard.
Sorry.
Okay, but look down a little.
Down, I've done that before. Okay.
I'll get out anyway.
Okay.
Camera, look it up.
Thank you.
Okay, we got, uh, public comment. Lauren Connor. There you are. Good.
As one of the co-owners of the Beards Building, um, we did have to close our business in there temporarily. But we have re-leased that business with the new owners taking possession rather quickly. And again, I'm coming to you to find out what it is that the City of Eastland is doing to begin to bring some new business into the downtown square. There's three businesses down there and it's not, it could be better. And right now it looks like a bunch of empty boarded up buildings with falling down roofs and broken windows. And so I'm here again because I want this business to be successful as they're coming in as former residents of Eastland. And they deserve a good chance and good traffic and things for people to do in the downtown area. And so I'm looking to you guys one more time. I'll call you back again, ask me again. How can you help this business be successful here in Eastland? Thanks.
Thank you very much. And Lisa Benson?
Um, hi, I'm Lisa Benson and I've been doing multi-family development and single-family home renovations. And I've been here now three and a half years. And I like to believe I'm successful at what I'm doing. Challenge that I have is there is no multi-family standards for tenancy and resident, single-family resident homes. Where anybody can rent a property, anybody can buy a $20,000 piece of garbage and put it on the internet and lease it for $800 a month. I have, uh, at the corner, it's at the corner of 500 Madeira. I have done, I bought the three garbage houses behind the apartments over on Ostrom Avenue. And they're right on the corner. I've gotten one done and sold. I got the tenant saying, wait, you know, we're working on the next house because there's three of them. And she said, what are you gonna, you're gonna buy the one next door because, you know, that's, I mean, the whole thing is just broken down. 506 South Madeira. It's a great example of a tenant landlord-held rental property for single-family residency. That the front yard, the grass is knee-deep. I mean, I'm doing cleaning up their houses, all of Ostrom Avenue. If you haven't been down there, I mean, drive, you know, as a city commissioner, it'd be certainly helpful if somebody got in the car and hit some of these neighborhoods that people seem to miss because it's not in your drive-thru. You don't have kids at the elementary school, you don't have people at the high school, you don't have kids in the junior high. So you don't come down Madeira because you can kind of see how much Madeira has cleaned itself up because I am doing what I'm doing. But I got a house right now over on Main Street at Highway 6 that's 10801. It's a beautiful home that I leased it for 293 last October. And I got the All Stop across the street because it's county, but I'm city, so I have to mow my lawn. But across the street, the All Stop, the bus stop, the truck stop, the car stop, the people stop, the drug stop. Right across the street. And I dropped the price on that house now by $42,000 and I'm still trying to sell it. And all I hear from the 37 showings I've had in six months is exactly like the 506 Madeira. You know? The house across the street is a real deterrent. Okay, I'm the fool for not realizing that. So I'd like to, once again, and I'll be back next month, beg for some form of identity in terms of putting together a registration program for landlords so we can at least keep up with them with compliance, with housing. And there's a statement that says in Building Code 93, it says, "Examples materially affect the health and safety of an ordinary tenant are sewage backups, roaches, rats, no hot water, faulty wiring, roof leaks, and sometimes a lack of heating and air conditioning." At the minimum, at the bare, bare minimum. You have to have some form of safe and healthy living. And there's so many properties that people are renting and they're unsafe. It's blight. The City of Abilene, is my three minutes up? Am I done?
Yeah. It's done?
You good?
Yeah.
We took notes.
I'll come back, talk about the City of Abilene and their blight program. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I can hope. Any other minutes of the April 15th, May 7th, and May 15th meeting? And Roma, you have a question or comment about one of them?
Uh, I have an error in, well, it's actually in the resolution that we passed. I, I stated the time was 6:00 PM, it was actually noon when we were meeting. I can fix that, just a matter of you knowing that I will fix it.
Which, which, uh?
On the, on the, uh, May 15th. When we canvassed the election. Almost at the bottom of the page. It's, it's in the resolution.
It'd be pro.
Isn't that May, May 15th minutes?
Oh, it's on the route, right?
Yeah, 6:00 PM. It's on, uh, no, keep, it could have been May 15th. The third sentence from the law.
Excuse me, does the resolution say the same or does it, or is it just?
That's the resolution, that's, that's.
It's on the resolution as well as the minutes.
But we're.
We're amending the resolution to correct the date, the number on it. I don't see.
So you should need to correct that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't see a problem with that. Uh, can I, I was here for all three meetings. Can I make a motion to approve all three? This?
Yeah, with that note on May 15th meeting. Make a motion from Shirley to approve all three with the note on the, uh, May 15th meeting. If the note on cancellation was 6:00 PM and it was at noon when we did that. You saying a motion for, uh, we got the motion needed second?
Second.
A second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Thank you very much. An answer report. You may be here all night.
And we're still hot. We're still moving. If y'all have any questions, you know, you can call me and ask me. And if you find any good views, I apologize, but, um, we're doing good. Good first quarter. Sales, you got your current sales tax in front of you.
Anybody have any question about, an answer report? Or reports? We have three of them. Ask them.
Yes.
Somebody good? No questions?
No.
There's a, Gil Morris says a big deficit in the utility fund. And it's because of our sewer payment that we might be dead in the year. That puts us behind for a while.
Okay. How much is the lack of water you put us behind?
We haven't hit that part as bad as we'll start noticing the next couple of months.
Okay. Once it heats up, that's when the cell phones water and that's.
That's when we're gonna start noticing.
Okay. Number six, the Board of City Commissioners made a request to take action on the following agenda items. Number one, discussion to consideration of second reading ordinance 24-900, an ordinance of the City of Eastland, Texas. Revising Chapter 19 zoning of the City, uh, of the Eastern Code of Ordinances, amending Section 19-11 permitted uses to allow duplexes in the single-family residence district with a specific use permit, providing a repealing and servability clauses and providing an effective date.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the second reading of that. Tony, that basically is just saying that if somebody wants to put a duplex in, our ordinances are kind of lacking on doing that. This gives the, the, the owner the right to come before y'all to get a specific use permit to allow that.
Right, we've had people requesting the past to place duplexes in our ordinance that consider it a single-family homes. But according to the International Residential Code, that's considered a single-family home. So what we're doing is we understand that not everywhere is gonna be the best idea to have a duplex city. So we decided to add that in the, uh, single-family zoning, however, only with a specific use permit, meaning that they would have to apply to both the Planning and Zoning Board and to y'all for a final decision whether or not, um, this would be allowed. It would also give every, every homeowner within 200 feet of the property the chance to voice their opinion as well. So we're not trying to sneak anything in anywhere.
Okay, second reading ordinance 24-900. Your motion is second.
I'll make.
I made motion. Richard made a motion to approve ordinance 24-900.
I'll second that.
Shirley has made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Item number two, discussion to consideration of second reading ordinance 24-901, an ordinance of the City of Eastland, Texas, amending Chapter 19 zoning of the Eastern Code of Ordinances by adding a Section 1919 fence regulations.
Yes, Commissioners, this is just the second reading of the, of the fencing ordinance, uh, that we approved on the first reading last time. Tony, you want to explain that just a little bit?
Uh, yes, we, we had realized from, uh, an issue that had popped up that we had, um, two different sets of, uh, fencing ord, uh, regulations that did not tie with each other, Code of Ordinances. So this is going to clean that up to where we have one set of, uh, fence rules. In addition to that, we're gonna include a lot more, um, definition of what's allowed, what's not allowed. And to, uh, if fences, uh, out of, you know, where they're damaged, not true, that would be a violation in here now. And also, um, we have something in there for, uh, rules about fencing around swimming pools for safety, to keep little kids from climbing into a pool. It's a rule that's already out there in the state and we want to codify it in our rules as well. I just wanted to bring up, uh, Mr. Mayor, when we were talking about this last month, uh, two of the questions that you had asked. One was about around pools. And if the pool is existing, is it somehow grandfathered? After talking to the city attorney, you know it is not. Now, I will say, most of the pools that are permanent here are already fenced from what we found. We're not, we don't have anything that we're going to have to, to readdress with them. This is only gonna really be hitting pools that are new installs or these seasonal pools that come up and down. We have, uh, some people here that work at the city that have those as well and we'll be addressing those. And we're not gonna put a hammer down on them by any means. We're gonna work with the property owners to, uh, gain compliance and work with them in a timely manner as we can. And then the second issue was, uh, we were talking about, um, electric fences. And you had brought up the fact about, what if I have a dog and inside of my fence, I put up a tiny one around the base? After looking at that, we're gonna draw the distinction between the two. If you, if the fence itself is an electric fence with no other barrier up, that would only be allowed in ag open. If you have an existing fence and you have put one at the bottom to keep rovers from getting outside, that's gonna be outside of these regulations because it's just a one-wire inside pool. So we will still.
Rep, rep, that last sentence, that will be inside or outside the?
Inside the, uh, fence to keep your pet inside. If you have one hot wire down there to dissuade them from getting out, that will be allowed.
Will be allowed.
Yeah, but we're.
Technically not part of the fence.
Correct.
Okay.
I move we, uh, pass ordinance 24-902 for the second reading.
901?
902.
901?
Yeah, okay.
Was that for 901, right? Richard made a vote to approve ordinance 24-901.
I'll second.
Second from James. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Item number three, discussion is consideration, second reading ordinance 24-902, an ordinance of the City of Eastland, Texas. Revizing Chapter 3 alcoholic beverages and Eastern Code of Ordinances, amending Section 3-3, consumption and possession in public places to prohibit consumption of alcohol within a central business district, providing section and making, uh, related changes to Section 3-1 definitions, providing repeating and servability clauses and providing an effective date.
Yes, this is, uh, the second reading of this ordinance. And a couple of months ago, y'all asked, um, for me to have the authority basically to sign off on alcohol and square, uh, ribs, ribs and, and, uh, ripfest, uh, for the wine festival, basically. And in doing that, it turned into, we needed to update some of our ordinances and stuff through TABC and stuff like that, which we had to define the area and we did, as, within the central bus, business district. And we just overlaid it with, um, the historic district.
Okay.
But if you pass it, I can sign off on it.
And that's to keep Denver having to come up?
Yes, yes, sir.
Every time, I have to wait for us to have a meeting, you end up that good?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 24-902 on the second reading.
Motion from Shirley to approve ordinance 24-902 on the second reading.
I second that motion.
Carol, second that motion. Before we move on, I want to point out something and this will come up later. All of our ordinances we just did has been the second reading of all of our ordinances. And the effective date is 30 days from today. If they were, okay. It'd be a reason why I said that coming up later. And we will now vote, all in favor of passing ordinance 24-902 on the second reading. All say aye. We will oppose same time. Motion carries. Number four, discussion consideration of approving resolution 2024-08, which amends the number of resolution 24-07, 2024-07, which we did last month, and we gotta get that straight.
Yes, all this is, is we placed the wrong, uh, number on the resolution last time and we need to amend that resolution to, uh.
24-.
Twenty, twenty.
08.
Yes. And within this amendment, we also need to amend the resolution to, uh.
6:00 PM.
Reflect, yeah.
Think that's the same resolution as the 6:00 PM did it now?
Yes.
I will make a motion to amend resolution 2024-07, amending it to.
Oh, what?
2024-08, correcting, well, correcting the numbering and also the time of the meeting to agree with the record.
Okay.
I'll second.
motion by Shirley and a second by James to approve the change in resolution 24-07 to 2024-08. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Item number five, discussion consideration of approving updated water conservation plan.
Yes, every five years, um, the Texas Water Development Board and TECQ requires each city to update their water conservation plan. And within that plan, they take the data from the last, uh, how all our water is used. And it goes into our water loss, amount of water we sell to wholesale customers. And what we will do to mitigate water loss in that. I don't, I mean, it, it has our fee schedule in there, uh, the total amount of water that we buy, we sell. And it just, it's really a comprehensive breakdown of all our water usage. So I'll be willing to entertain you, uh, questions you have.
I'm sure everybody studied that and fully understands it.
Sure.
You got all your questions ready? This is, like you said, it's a boilerplate, something we do. And I don't agree with the deal where Shug is losing population and stuff, but that's something they play with and do.
That's what I noticed first.
Yeah, well, the population didn't look right.
It shows the population being like half, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's not half, but it's a third.
Now, yeah, in the next four, 20 years or so.
Right now, 2023 is 3,800, and 24, 2,500, and 2070. I will be. Anyway.
I thought that didn't look right.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Need to approve.
What did they do to numbers?
They pull them from the census data and then they do their forecasting models and it's way above my head on how they come up with some of these numbers. It's done by actuaries and stuff like that at the Census Bureau, is my understanding.
Same people that do this report do our tax rate.
I move we pass the water consumi, the water conservation plan for the city.
Motion from Richard to approve the water conservation plan for the City of Eastland.
Make sure it's the right number.
Entertaining second.
I'll second the motion.
Shirley has made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Item number six, discussion and consideration of approved resolution 2024-09, designated authorized signatory.
Uh, this is a pretty standard banking, um, deal. Anytime we have a new commissioner come on, um, we have to update, uh, our signatories at the bank so they have the ability to sign checks if the need arises. Because as of right now, just, it's just me and Roma who can sign checks. Let me rephrase that. We can, we usually sign checks, but sometimes one of us is out and we have to have one of y'all sign it.
Yeah, so Shirley and James.
I, we're all on there.
They're already on there.
So we would update it, add it, and Carol to Ms. Jones.
Does that something I need to go?
She'll, she'll get Carol.
Yeah, I just need to get the information from you and then when it's ready, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Everybody has to sign all.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, that's motion to approve resolution 2024-09.
I make a motion with 3, 2024.
Motion from James?
Second.
Second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion carries. City manager briefing.
Yes, um, as everybody's seen, the North Fork is, it's almost complete done. They're finishing up at Lake Eastland at the dam right now. They think they're gonna be through, um, by this week. We're hoping that we can get one more landowner to sign on to bid out the south, the south part of that project. Um, we had a meeting last Friday and we have a tentative date to put out streets for bid next month, which will come to y'all in July for the bid approval. We think we're possibly gonna be within the budget. Uh, may have to cut one street. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna compile a list, two or three, that, um, we can use as alternates and see where our budget falls in that.
You said next month and you said July. So what's next month?
Next month, we will put it out for bids. And then we will receive the bids and it won't come for y'all's approval.
They'll have those bids by July.
July, yeah. Well, it'll come to y'all's approval in July to approve the bids.
So if what I understood, you just said, all of the streets that we've seen in the past in this program are on that list. They haven't cut anything in.
Not yet. If the budget maintains where it's at and we see it forecasted without any.
If we don't meet the budget, then we will have the authority to approve or to pick which street to enter out.
Yes, and I think.
We still have that.
We think it's possibly, if the budget stays where it is, we got one, one street. We think we're gonna be about.
If you get that close, buddy.
200,000 short.
That's all, too, if you get that close.
Uh, the H&amp;H study is done. We're just waiting on the Texas Water Development Board to send all the paperwork for, to close out that grant. Stoplights out there, so everybody knows I have no control over that, no control. I talked to TechDOT a week and a half ago. And what I was told, that it is a power issue with Encore that the lights may have been on last week, but we can all see that they're not. And I have not received an update since then.
Last month, it was, they were trying to connect and relate the state with the Walmart line.
Well, that's.
Why can't they not go ahead and open up that right-hand lane and make that a little more?
We've asked that. They do not want to do that until everything is fully operational. It, it is a TechDOT.
It's so.
Yes, yes, but for the record, we have nothing to do with turning on those stoplights within the city.
I'll say, I'll give everybody your phone number today.
I had three people at lunch the other day asking about those lights and I'm like, that's me. Um, and that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Any questions for JJ?
Thank you.
And there's a list of those streets right there. Okay, who's up next? Go, get it, big boy.
All right. Commissioners, uh, Terry started April with 13 cases in the month. He opened 32 new cases, closed 19, left us with a total of 26. Out of those, um, cases opened, we had, uh, 50 different violations. And out of the 19 cases closed, we had 19 violations. We had three annual notices that were sent out amongst all those. Talking about the code compliance software, uh, Terry got an email from, uh, Ncode Today. They're supposed to be talking with him tomorrow, trying to get the last issues on the, on the code compliance side taken care of. On the permitting side, we had a couple of hiccups, but we figured them out. And, uh, that's been going pretty smoothly. We're hoping that after Terry's meeting tomorrow, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, his side will be fully open and we won't have to use ComCate anymore. But last time I said that, we're still using ComCate. So we're trying to get that ironed out. We, uh, really excited about some of the things that are, that are coming. As some of you know, we had the replant of the area behind the Woodlands finalized. That's gonna be 40 new, um, single-family home sites that are gonna be developed now. They're gonna be, they've already started clearing out there, talked to Williamson Surveying. They're gonna start putting, uh, property pins out there very shortly. Uh, he was in here this morning. Some new businesses have come to the square. We have one that's over here in the old Patriots place. It's gonna be a barbecue place that moved over from Cisco. So we're excited for that. Uh, other things down the pipeline that we can't talk about yet, but it is very good. Some of the things I want to talk about real quick, um, Ms. Benson was in here and she was talking about the issue with, uh, some of the properties here in town. We did order the property maintenance code books to, um, have those available for y'all to look over. I gave one to Shirley to look at.
I'm in the process of reading it. I haven't read the entire thing yet, but I'm, I'm going through it page.
And you can see what I'm talking about whenever I say that it is engineered for, you know, larger towns and smaller towns. But like I said, some things we'll have to fine-tune so it's right for Eastland, not just take it right as the book comes. And there's also some issues that we already have in our code ordinances that we'll have to remove that are in there. Talking about trash litter and debris, high weeds and grass, that's stuff we already have rules for now. Let's see what else. Uh, one thing that, uh, Ms. Benson brought up was the property across the street from her house that is in the county. That is something that we tried to look at, taking care of. We were working with city attorney to see if we could enforce code rules in the ETJ, but we found out that we cannot. The property she's talking about is one that we wish we could. The property she's talking about is one that we wish we could take care of, but our hands are tied on it. We just can't. I just wanted to bring that up.
Does the county not have any kind of base?
Uh, I, I don't know if the county has, it, there are some counties that have uh code type, you know, health and safety, uh environmental officers. Um, I just don't think, I don't know if that's something the county has in their list of needs in the hierarchy. I don't know if that's something that they have plans for or, you know, they, they've got a lot of stuff they're already dealing with. Some bigger counties, they have it. I just don't know if Eastland's got that. That's something that the commissioners will need to talk about. I wanna let you guys know that Terry and I are working on a, well, Terry really, I'm just, he just runs stuff past me, but he's working on our first true condemnation uh for a property here in town uh that is, it basically picked apart. It's over near the jail. There are no property owners. We're going through trying to make sure there's no heirs, but it's something that we're gonna be bringing to you guys here within the next couple of months to uh put up the condemnation for the city attorney to try to improve the area. So just to let you know that's on the horizon. And also while we were talking about the replat, there are some areas there in the, in, in the new addition behind the crisis center that are, they're wanting to put a type of commercial business out there, but they don't wanna do our C-two zoning. They're looking more for office, um, health offices, medical offices, so professional offices. And we're wanting to make sure that we don't um set something up to where a tire shop can move in after that business shuts down in a neighborhood. So we're gonna be coming to y'all after, you know, P and Z. We're, we're gonna be creating a general business district that only allows professional offices in that zoning type. That way we can allow for that type of business in an area that's near a single-family home without opening the door for anything else that can go up the Miracle Mile to move in that area too. So we're working with the city attorney on that. That'll be coming to y'all uh here in a couple of months. I think that's it for me.
Anything else for Tony? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next is the chief of police, Chief Pitt.
Sorry, commissioners. We had, in April, we had two hundred and seventy-one calls for service. Twenty-seven people were arrested. We took sixty-eight calls for reports on sixty-eight calls. We had twenty-one agency assists, three hundred and twenty-two business checks. We had eighteen traffic crashes, uh sixteen domestic violence issues we had to deal with. Eighteen cases were filed with the district attorney. We had no juvenile cases in April, so that was good. On the traffic enforcement side of things, we wrote two hundred and twenty-two, two hundred and twenty citations, three hundred and twenty-nine warnings for a total of five hundred and forty-nine traffic accidents. Animal Control answered twenty calls, for ninety-one calls for service. She issued twenty citations and zero warnings. Uh, we impounded eleven dogs, adopted out three, and we had one in quarantine. We served thirteen arrest warrants in April, uh a couple of pretty substantial felony warrants in, in that group. We also, our corporal Spruill completed canine schools. We're excited to have our canine program back up and going. He's got one more certification he gets on Wednesday, which will help with court cases, but he's up and going with canine. We're excited about that. We had one arson case, uh two vehicle pursuits, one foot pursuit. We recovered one stolen vehicle. We arrested five people within the city limits for driving while intoxicated. So we had a pretty busy month in April.
Yeah, you did. What was the arrest? I mean, it's up twenty-seven. The highest you've been before that is fourteen. What was the occasion? One of those months, huh?
Yeah, just one of them months, I guess. Soul flare. We've had, you gotta also remember, we've got a rookie that has hit the streets and they're, they're pretty active.
You fully staffed now? Are you fully staffed now?
I will be as of July. Alex graduates in July and he will start two weeks after that, which he'll be with, he'll be on the FTO program for three months. But in July, we will be fully staffed for the first time since I've been at chief here.
Good to hear.
Excellent.
Any questions for Chief Pitt? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Chief Williams?
Good evening. Um, our fault call volume for April was sixty-three. Uh, we were down a little bit. Fire weather conditions uh have stabilized pretty good right now with the environment, so it keeps us a little, little less busy out. We're at sixty-three. That's two point one calls a day and we're, we're averaging over two point, at two point two-three calls a day for consistently. Uh, we attended forty-four events inside the city and nineteen out in the county. We had zero mutual aid calls this month. No smoke detectors were installed. Uh, matter of fact, I think there, there was one that was missed in the statistic. I apologize. Uh, the incidents that occurred after ten o'clock at night and before seven in the morning was twenty-two. So it kinda uh goes with their arrests maybe. I mean, it's the, that overnight activity got a little, got a little active in this month. So uh we were a little busier in the overnight hours. Uh, we had zero structure fires and, and we responded to no structure fires with our mutual aid company, so it was a little um. Yeah, yeah, a little quiet there. No grass fires. We had one vehicle fire and twenty-nine medical assists with the EMS partners. Um, and twelve motor vehicle accidents, uh twelve calls for some type of public assist with nine fire alarms or invest, some type of investigation. Zero rescues, no hazardous material incidents, and we gained uh two members on the volunteer uh application last month. So kind of a stable month for us. One of the things I'd like to discuss is I, I received an email uh from the county and it appears that we have received our FEMA reimbursement from the Eastland County Complex. Uh, we received forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten forty-six is what they told me, so we, uh. Uh, so that's seventy-five percent of what was filed, so they, they, they only, they only reimbursed seventy-five percent. And I have to give credit to staff and the volunteers. Uh, that was a uh pretty untrained uh preemptive deal that we started tracking expenses immediately. So the fire started at four o'clock on March seventeenth. Most all the members returned back to the station within three and four o'clock that morning. At seven that morning, we began preparation to receive the governor, so there were some expenses that were, that cost. Fire trucks flooded into the area and we uh set up the, the ability to document all the water that was used by people coming in and refilling. We were able to follow that water, not uncontested. We did follow that and we did get, but we received a nice uh reimbursement back and it, it, it came from the staff and the volunteers doing their due diligence in recording and documenting um a lot of, a lot of stuff. So a lot of our expenses that were documented were unreimbursable, but we had them in case they weren't, so. Uh, that, that was good news. Um, the fire department, we had a fire department representative presented at Texas Dot this month for their safety briefing. I thought that was a pretty good deal for the fire department. We got to be a part of that. They invited us out. Uh, this is for May, but sometimes I get to, get confused. We presented a Leah Johnson student at Eastland High School with the fire department's annual scholarship for seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then we were honored enough to participate in the Greg Simmons Memorial Band Scholarship. We were able to present that in his honor for his family. So this month, in, in April, the Eastland Fire Department became a certified Texas Commission on Fire Protection Training Facility. So that was a big leap for us. That's a big deal. So we are now a certification site. Um, we applied for fire inspector class that we can conduct, fire instructor, and uh the basic fire academy. So we went for the instructor so that we can certify our own people to teach in the fire training facility. We're gonna certify our staff to be fire inspectors, to shore up the fire prevention program with fire codes and fire inspection program and then uh the basic fire academy, the intent is to um train and certify our members and, and local people, hopefully for a career path in the fire department. Um, also this month, we have secured an EMT class. So uh we were able to um acquire an outside coordinator. We will use in-house EMS instructor and we will be able to conduct an EMT class and those are the two certifications that are required for, for the career path in the fire service. So we'll be able to conduct those in-house and now uh hope to bring that training to the local area. Uh, and the last thing is, uh, I just.
I'm just gonna ask, that benefits us, I mean, actually doesn't it? I mean, in other words, if we have it here, it keeps them from having to go to school somewhere else for those.
Yeah, it, it will definitely eliminate any training, uh, any travel expenses and, and any tuition too that we would have to pay someone else. Uh, we're, 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 all that is in the development stages on how we're going to uh conduct the tuition. One idea is the basic fire academy will be three thousand dollars to the student. Uh, there'll be a down payment that the student will have to invest for their commitment to complete and certify. Once they're certified and they're complete, they'll be able to work off their tuition by working at the fire station responding to our mercy. So we're just trying to get creative in that program to benefit our department and, and develop our own and develop uh, uh, the youth that, that's come, the future, the future, we'll be able to build it here and attract. So they won't have to leave. That, that's a huge point. I appreciate that, cause the, the closest EMT school is about one hour, one-way travel distance, Stevensville, Avalon. Uh, so we'll be able to conduct it here. I think there's one in Possum Kingdom Lake, somewhere around Minnella. But it's, it's a good fifty-minute travel one-way to attend that class, so we'll have it locally and we do have it to man. There are already people.
Did you say the EMT training is three thousand dollars?
Uh, that was, that, that, that was just the program we were doing for the basic fire cattle.
Okay, that's a fire cattle.
Yeah, the, the EMT class uh wa- is, is a little less and, and we're, and we're looking at the same type program.
Okay.
Well, either than.
Overlapped though, just saying, I wanna make.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, uh, the, the TC, the, the fire training is, uh, it's the Eastland Fire Department Training Center. Uh, the EMT class, we're using an outside coordinator. Uh, we have one EMS instructor in-house. And so that EMS instructor will deliver the material to the students. The coordinators do the three thousand feet stuff, the paperwork and all that. And we're, we're acquiring them. That's where the cost is coming from. There, there's a hard cost in that tuition for the students because we're having to use an outside coordinator. And uh we'll be creative in that too, trying to get, uh, where we can make it benefit the city of Eastwood, the Eastland Fire Department and the surrounding area.
That's good. That's a good start.
Engine sixty-one and engine six. Uh, I just wanna recognize our duty staff captain Charlie Torres and our volunteer member captain Brian Keller. They have worked diligently in uh repairing and upgrading these two engines. Uh, engine six is about eighteen years old. Engine sixty-one is twenty-three years old. Um, neither of them, either of them passed the pump test that we had to have through the commissioner and they have repaired all those. Uh, probably, uh, we have spent about six thousand in parts and material. It would prob- it would be over a ten thousand dollar job if we hired it out and it's all taking place under the roof down there. Those guys are, they're covered in grease and, 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 and little knuckle bumps all over, cause it's a tedious job. But I wanna recognize those two, cause they've, they're, they're helping us utilize funds in other areas where needed by, by accomplishing and taking on that chore.
All right.
And I thank y'all for the time. I'm sorry I went so long.
Thank you. Thank you. No, you did good. Appreciate it. Got some municipal court reports. Do you have any questions about that? You have community foundation report that we get on a quarterly basis. Uh, we pick, we give money to. You have that in your packet. You have a notice with Gina Withers doing some course training after our city judge and appreciate her doing that and continuing her job and doing what she does. Okay, the next thing you have in your packet is the charter of the city of Eastwood. This is something that I've been waiting to bring up uh for this meeting. What's happened is, is we ran into a roadblock when Cecil passed away and we couldn't appoint. Our city charter says we can't appoint. We had to wait for an election, so we went through that process and you were elected. And what we wanna do is look at our charter and talk about it. For us to change the charter, it has to go before the public in an election. We wanna do that in November, so we need to look at this charter. Next month, we will go through this thing, so it'll be a long meeting, so be prepared for that. But I wanted, you have in here a report from our city attorney who went through our charter and made recommendations, suggestions, making sure we don't stumble over ourselves. And I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, cause when you hear the city attorney looked at it and they said, the city attorney does not run this city. I will say that publicly.
Right.
So the world knows. This is the decision we get to make and have to make and we need to do this. I wanted to bring up two or three things to give you, a- and we will go through this individually. But on your first page, under Article Five, Form of Government, uh, the mayor is called a chairman. I'm the chairman of the board of city commissioner. No one ever uses that reference outside of this room. Uh, I'm the mayor. Uh, he's the mayor pro tempus, instead of the vice chairman or whatever. Cleaning that up and just make that position mayor is that, is what that does. Uh, the next one down there, Article Six, is what I just brought up about ordinances. Our ordinances are read, uh, we have a first reading, a second reading, and then we wait thirty days. We don't even have to do a second reading. We approve an audit, it's done, it's ready. I, my personal preference is do the first and second reading, but on the second reading, it's done and take out the thirty days. That's why I brought that up altogether.
Making it better.
That, that's what that was about. The reason why I like the first and second reading is someone can't say we ran something through and nobody knew it. We do the first reading, the world knows it, it's published, it's in the paper, uh, it's, it's public knowledge. And then we do the second reading and someone doesn't catch on to that, I don't know what else to do for them. Probably not gonna get thirty days either. But that's just, that's something we can do the first and second reading, but it's our decision. We're not making that decision tonight. I'm just telling you, that's, that's a recommendation from the ma- from the attorney and I'm going, no, we're not doing that. Don't do that, okay? So there's that.
But I think on that, I think it also states in there, if I'm not mistaken, that it has, it's, it's not an emergency. It has to be the, the, the hanging of the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper, I believe. So that gives the citizens a chance to see.
Yeah, it's, that information about the emergency stuff is in there and I'm just, I'm just pointing these things out. I want y'all to go through and read.
I read these things.
The section three on the next page two, right, almost right below the center of the page, is section three, terms of vacancy. Therefore, you fill the vacancy by appointment instead of waiting for an election. There, that's what caused this entire thing to come up. And the next one is, and I'm gonna stop after this one. I just thought this was funny, is the section says commissioners serve without pay. This is fine, but I wanna point out that in case the commission wanna change it, no, we don't wanna change it. But that's just, we can get paid. I mean, that's, it's legal. We could do that. We're not doing that. I mean, that's another one of those.
Wow.
That's another one that, well, that's not happening, dude.
No.
Not, it won't be, it won't be unanimous, I can tell you that. Uh.
That's, that's huge to get through water.
Read, read through this. You have three docs of material. You have the, the index and, and it tells you all this good stuff. You have everything you need. Hang on to this, take it with you, look it over, take time to look at it, because in June, we're going through it.
Right.
And we're gonna make sure we agree, we understand what we're doing, and then we'll put it together to go in the paper when they do public. Tell people what we're doing, why we're doing what we're doing, whatever, so they'll be aware when they're going to vote and move what they're voting for. So you have that and that's why we have it. And the main thing out of all that is where we can do an appointment in, in the future. We don't have to wait. We got into bind of not being able to have a forum and that kinda stuff and that just makes life a little bit harder.
And get sure that.
But clean that up.
Can I ask one question? On this, on this meeting, would it be beneficial for us to do a call meeting and go through?
If that's what we wanna do, that's fine. Well, if everybody gets it, gets ready, I don't. If that's what we wanna do, that's fine. Well, if everybody gets it and gets ready, I don't, uh, we could do it at noon and be able to eat, sit here and talk about it two or three hours. However, we wanna do that, y'all tell me your thoughts later on. We don't have to do that now unless you just want to. But I, I don't have a problem having our Monday meeting or our regular meeting in June and people aware, we're gonna do it. Maybe do it at the end of the meeting and everybody can go home. We'll just sit here and talk about it. We aren't really going, we really aren't voting on anything in that meeting. I don't want us all to discuss it and have a point to discuss it. We don't have to take any action in June, but we're gonna talk about it in June. We're gonna go through.
I agree.
So nobody say, well, I didn't understand that.
I'm probably not gonna be at the June meeting. But I would like to be involved in the discussion of it.
Well, maybe we can put it in to call a meeting.
You had a week later, maybe?
A workshop or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh?
A workshop or something.
It'd be a work, workshop, kind of what we do in the budget workshop. Have a workshop with this.
Yeah.
Uh, get, get your calendars, uh, whatever your schedule, you know, you're out. Uh, if y'all wanna wait till after our next meeting or do it the week before our next meeting, whatever your schedule allows, if anybody else is gonna be gone. And we'll, we'll publish that and everybody do it. We can either do it during the day or do it in the evening, whatever suits everybody. But we do need to have a workshop as a great name for that. But I want us to go through this, because we're going to the public. We need to understand what we're doing. Uh, I'm gonna say in the general consensus of the, the world today, people don't trust government. So you go to, you go to government, we wanna change something. I consider people voting against it just because we wanna change something with the government. It's gonna make people nervous. We're not doing anything. We're, we're trying to improve the business, but we need to sell this too. We need to understand what we're doing. Nothing in here is made. You know, if we didn't do anything to this, we would keep on functioning just as well as we have. But there are things we can do to clean this business up too. So we need to look at that and do that where we can.
I agree with you. I, I looked them over. Yes.
Entain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion with you.
I'll say it.
Jane made a motion and Richard made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed, say aye. Motion Carrie, thank you very much.